At the end of the meeting tonight, we're going to pick up the chairs. And if perchance the meeting goes to another session, everybody stands up to our man. Article 39 regarding an amendment to the general bylaws for a new wetlands protection bylaw. Walter Bigfoot?
Mr. Moderator, Article 39, I move to amend the general bylaws of Town Berlin by adding a new Article X-20, the Berlin Wetlands Protection Bylaw, as printed in Article 39 in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is being seconded to amend the general bylaws of the Town Berlin by adding a new Article 20, the Berlin Wetlands Protection Bylaw, as printed in Article 39 in the warrant for this meeting. Mr. Bigfoot?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This simply by the length in the Town warrant seems onerous and very, very complex. The fact is about ninety percent of it or more is nothing but the state bylaw which we repeated and then inserted certain things which I want to address. I'm going to try to keep it as simple as possible so you get the main points. Then I'm going to ask if a consultant that we had used to help to draft this, a professional wetland specialist, to help answer any questions. But if you turn to page 104 in your town report, the, um, that's the Section 5, which is the protected wetland resource areas in adjacent land presumptions. And this really lays out, although it's referred to in other parts of the bylaw, this is the meat and potatoes of the bylaw and what it's about. Go down to Section 5.3. Oh, start at Section 5.1C, by the way. And there are three basic things that the bylaw does. Number one, it adds a 35-foot no-touch zone around wetlands. Right now, let's say you have a stream and then it has bordering, they call it bordering, vegetated wetlands, they call them resource areas. From the edge of that resource area, for 100 feet, by state law, anything done in that area has to be approved by the local conservation commission. So you would have to file a notice of intent with the commission, the commission, you have to have a plan, the commission looking all over, and then would issue you an order of conditions to go ahead with your projects. And frankly, for all the moaning and groaning about the wetlands law, it's virtually spineless. You can do anything almost you want in that area at this time, except put a leach field in that area, and that has to be 100 feet away from the wetlands. Now, what Section C does, it doesn't add to that distance. It takes the first 35 feet, the edge of the wetlands, takes the first 35 feet of that 100 and turns it into what's called a no-disturbed zone. And the science on the importance of buffers for filter strips, for wildlife corridors, and other values is well established. So what you would do if you wanted to build near a wetland within 100 feet, you'd come to the conservation commission and you couldn't do anything within the first 35, but the next 65, you build your houses, do anything you want, clear the land, and do just about anything you want. But that buffer strip has to stay there for filtration, for wildlife corridors, and other benefits. That's number one, very important. And again, I can't stress how the science of these buffer strips, the science of how valuable they are, is well established. The, um, the next thing we want to do, and I'll move down to 5.7 at the bottom of the page, we'll deal with that first, let's say that's the second most important thing. Right now, every stream in town that is a perennial stream, that is, it runs without drying up, is called a river by definition. In 1996, the state legislature passed a law called the River Protection Act. All of those streams are protected for 200 feet on each side of it. First 100 feet is sacred, the second 100 feet, under certain conditions, you can do certain things. But it's 200 foot on each side of a river, which is a perennial stream that runs continuously, and that's protected. However, with climate change and everything, some of these streams are apt to dry up. For example, this past year, a stream was legally declared intermittent from being printed because it dried up more than four days. I can remember Lester Ross, after the Ross site is named, catching trout out of that brook when I was a kid. I caught brookies out of it. Harvey Sheptelain used to fish in Brooktown, but right now, it's dried up and an individual proved it, and therefore it's no longer a river, and that allowed some houses to go in in development that otherwise wouldn't have gone in. What this law does, what this, what this does, and it's done by a lot of cities and towns, incidentally, fifty-six percent of the cities and towns in the state have a local wetland protection bylaws, this one's about average. What this does, excuse me, is declare any stream that is on the USGS topographical maps to be perennial, no matter whether they dry up or not. If they're on those maps, those USGS maps, there's a reason they've been there, and that's because historically, they've been perennial streams, i.e. rivers, and come under the River Protection Act. But again, you can, if they dry up once in a while, then they're no longer, you can develop right up to them, unless there's a wetland they are buffering. But, you know, there'll be a 35-foot thing if we pass this. So this declares all streams on the USGS maps to be perennial, or rivers. The third one, you could actually say there's three parts to it. Right now, freshwater wetlands, vernal pools, and lands subject to flooding are covered by the state law if they are connected to a stream which eventually goes into another stream and eventually drains to the ocean. They have to be connected by these arteries of our ecosystem, the streams. What this says is that whether they're connected or not, like a vernal pool, if it's in a wetland area, it's protected. If it's outside the wetland area, and I have one in my backyard, this will affect me, it isn't protected. If this is passed, it will be protected with a buffer zone around it. The same thing applies to, um, land subject to flood, land subject to flooding, and also wetlands that are isolated up on the hillsides in the mountains that don't drain into the, uh, a stream. And I know of a large area, it's on conservation land, but it's on the very top of Mount Pisgah. It has no outflowing on it at all, it's a large wetland. If it wasn't conservation land at this time, it could be gone in, some could fill in on it, you could build houses around it, but with this bylaw, that area is protected. The wildlife, the amphibians, reptiles, and other life forms that depend on that wetland are just as important as if it was in fact a wetland connected to a stream, and those should be protected. This is, this is a common thing. So what we're doing tonight, we're asking you to do, is to approve the 35-foot buffer, all right? That's ten pages. So from here to the wall, round wetlands, unless it's already disturbed, unless it's a lawn, unless it's a field, unless it's agriculture, or unless they're putting in utilities, you can't go and change it. You can't strip the land, you can't build a house on it or anything else, it's a no-touch zone. From that 35 feet out to 100 feet, it's the same as the law today. You build houses, extend your porch, put in driveways, garages, anything. So that's what that does. The second thing, again, just to make sure that no more of our streams in town are declared intermittent from rivers and therefore non-protected by the River Act, all streams under maps, USGS maps, are rivers. And then again, the third area is this whole notion of we protect vernal pools, wetlands, or areas subject to flooding, whether or not they're connected to a stream. Now, there are going to be a lot of questions, where are the exemptions, and this and that, and they're going to be all justified, and I'll try and answer some, but we've invited our consultant to come tonight, a wetland specialist from Northboro by the name of Pat Garner, who spent an awful lot of time helping us develop this bylaw. And in fact, he used to be the chairman of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, highly respected on, on wetlands, and so he's going to help us answer any questions. But that's all I have to say right now. Other any questions? Okay, the hearing, I will...
Are those people that want to address some questions to this? Priscilla Hoven?
I really swore I wasn't coming up here tonight, but now that I've listened to Walter, I have a question on River Bridge. Does this affect the development down there?
Um, not for what's planned, Priscilla. Everything that is planned would not be affected by a 35-foot buffer. It's all, you know, the plans have been laid out, and the 35-foot buffer would be on the wetlands out further around the area. It would affect that, but I don't think it affects anything that's being planned at this time.
That area floods out, as we all know, a lot, so I guess I'm a little, when you were talking about the other flooding that goes on, I, to me, that was the first thing that came to my mind.
Yeah, you know, people, I've talked to a lot of people, and oh, we see this and we see that, but when you really look at it, the studies have been done, they've done the topo maps, and all the area that is planned for development is not, is not infringing on any protected area existing or if this bylaw passes.
Peter?
Peter Hoffman, 183 Randall. First, I'd like to apologize to Walter and to the Conservation Commission for opposing this article, and I'll explain why, and it'll be a little bit detailed. So for example, Walter was talking about an exemption for those properties or land or structures that already pre-exist. It's not entirely true. It says, if you can look at 3.15, "The application for issuance of a bylaw wetland permit shall not be required for maintenance and repair." Something new. These exemptions shall not include substantially changing, enlarging, or adding to existing structures. So for example, if you have a driveway that's dirt and you want to pave it, I believe that this bylaw would prohibit that because that would be a substantial improvement that wouldn't be correcting a culvert that was created by a stream across the, across the driveway. Land subject to flooding, I think we all know of or have some of that on land that we know. And that will become protected. And those of us that have land that is, and we don't, that has that experience, will now be subject to the Conservation Board's decisions. In general, I'm not much for regulation, and this is a substantial one. While Walter says it's ninety percent state law and only a few things are added, those few things that are added are pretty substantial, and they're going to clearly restrict those of us that have vernal pools on our land or other wetland areas that Walter's talked about. What will that do? That'll devalue especially those of us, which again, doesn't include me because we don't have wetlands, those of us that want to do something with our land, put an extra structure on it, change the SEPTA if it's substantial. There's an exemption for, a limited exemption for agriculture. I'm not really sure why agriculture would have an exemption and the rest of us wouldn't. There's arguments on both sides, but pollution's pollution, and I truly am all for environmental protection, but I'm not sure in a small town like this with substantial bylaw like this that it's appropriate. So discretion. So let's say an applicant comes to the board and makes an application for whatever relief they're seeking. I would want the board to be able to grant the relief if the board thought it was appropriate. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. Well, I'm going to read you a section under 4.4B. "Notwithstanding the above, the commission shall not permit a limited project that will have any adverse effect on rare species habitat sites." So even if the board approves of what you want to do, the board can't, if they adhere to the law, grant that relief. Now, those of us that aren't, that are on a very limited budget, as some of you might see here in Section 6, or may be required to hire an expert consultant. I get it, it's complicated. Most of us, myself included, wouldn't be able to prosecute an application for a board like this successfully if it was a complicated application. But if the board requires it, and you're a regular homeowner, you may, you or anyone that's an applicant may not have the finances to fund that, and that's going to be pretty onerous on the applicant. Perhaps last but not least, in Section 7.41A. So I'm sure everyone knows what mitigation is. You have a vernal pool over here, and the applicant wants to get rid of the vernal pool or pave over it or put something in it that would be now prohibited from that activity, there could be mitigation. Do something for the environment that is helpful that will equate to that. So where I'm going here is 7.4B1A. "The commission shall deny a permit for failure to meet the requirements of this bylaw where no conditions are adequate to protect the wetland resource area values." There's no language in there about mitigation. So if an applicant wants to offer some other solution that will accomplish environmental conservation, he or she will fail because of that section. So in the end, I'm not sure any of us, or some of us at least, want to have this kind of restriction on a freedom. Is that freedom more important than environmental conservation? I don't know, that's for everyone to decide. I think environmental conservation is critical. This is a pretty onerous proposed bylaw, and therefore I recommend that it be defeated. Thank you.
For others that wish to speak.
My name is Dave Burke, 16 Coburn Road, and for the last thirty-five years or so, I've been involved in land use issues. Everything from construction to land conservation, and for nearly thirty of those years, I've worked as a wetland specialist. I am considered an expert in wetland delineation and interpretation of certain wetland regulations. I work for the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act practically daily, certainly five days a week, and I work with various local bylaws at the same time. There's a lot to say about this legislation. It's, it is proposed, I tend to agree with the former speaker. However, I'm certainly not one to tell anyone how to vote, I'm more of a live free or die kind of guy, but I could begin on the, uh, the interlude or the two-page introduction to the act, to the regs that went out. And I'd have to disagree with Walter, I think, to begin with, where he states that this is consistent with the average regulations of other towns and less stringent than many. That, that's just not true. It's, in fact, in my experience, it is not consistent with average regulations whatsoever. Congratulations to Patrick Garner and Walter and the commission for putting together a truly gold standard set of regulatory measures that are really developed to protect uplands, not so much wetlands. As you know, Walter adequately described the importance of buffer zones around wetlands and stresses his 35-foot no-touch zone as being important. I tend to agree that is important. Many towns have no-touch zones, in fact, most towns in this area do have such no-touch zones, but none that I know of have the gold standard of stream protection that I see within these wetland regulations. This town is braided with streams, intermittent streams, drainage ditches, and fortunate to have a series of truly perennial streams, which is a blessing. A lot of towns, they're, they're either polluted and gone by, or they're, they are in fact drying up to a certain extent. We here in Berlin have worked for many years, and I've worked with the commission. In fact, I was the one that helped to establish the 25-foot no policy, and that was adopted from the wetland, the Weston, Town of Weston, set of rules that they, they operate by. That was in fact, just as I stated, a policy, not in fact a regulation, therefore it was, it was something of a pretty please, don't work within our 25-foot no-touch and we'll get along with your project, et cetera. It, it, and it was not written in stone, and it was challenged, and it was overcome, and that's unfortunate. As Walter says, there's generally three components to the proposed legislation. One is the 35-foot no-touch, the other is corralling every stream in, in town into a perennial designation, and the third is really identifying things that are not protected at this time, such as inland vegetated wetlands, and vernal pools that aren't certified, and drainage ditches, and streams that are up gradient of all other resources, et cetera. All those things are now coming in for protection. And at the very least, this is going to get complicated when we try to administer this at a highly professional, effective level. Trust me there, you will no longer be going to Walter to talk business and kind of work things out with the commission. If you have issues, you might, at that time, have gone to DEP for a fairly simple appeal. The appeal to any of this is now, once you butt heads with the commission, you're at a loggerhead, the appeal goes to the state superior court. And that's when you hire a guy like me and a lawyer, possibly an engineer, and you get in line for four to six months, whatever the waiting period is, the project goes on hold, and you visit with the judge. And the judge oftentimes throws it back to the community, says work it out, and at this, I've been through them, they go, they go on for years. I've seen them go on for tens of years. That being said, I, I think Walter, you'd understand, and you get a little technical here, but when you, you talk about riverine characteristics, et cetera, with a, with an intermittent stream, that's, that's one of the most important references in that document. And I'll tell you why. In most cases, a wetland has a true wetland, and there are many, many true wetlands worthy of protection in town, and they get that protection with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act right now. And the commission's done a great job for the seventeen years I've been here. I've watched them do a lot of great things. But at this point, when you start to throw a 200-foot buffer, that's not a buffer zone, excuse me, it's a riverfront area, and it, it runs 200 feet laterally to every stream and wetland that that stream runs through in town, trust me, it's going to get complicated. And that, that stream or wetland doesn't necessarily have to be on your property to cause problems, and it's often the case that it's on your neighbor's property, but you're going to inherit that 200-foot lateral riverfront area. And I think it's important for us to understand what we may or may not be signing up for here, because those of you that own any land, this is, this is important stuff. It's, it's, you know, for some of us, a lifelong decision about how our lands are managed. It's given a big chunk of control over to, regulatory control over to the commission, which is one thing, but also the state of Massachusetts, DEP, and, and the superior courts. And these things don't go backwards. I mean, it's 35-foot now is one thing, it could be 50 feet in 20 years, and I've seen them go to 100 feet. I might add as well that, you know, the neighboring towns to reflect back to the consistency with average regulations of other towns, less stringent than many, that, that's just patently inherent faults, with all due respect. And I can tell you, you worked hard on the document, but Shrewsbury doesn't have this, Northboro doesn't have it, Bolton doesn't have it, Marlboro doesn't have it, Hudson doesn't have it, Framingham doesn't have it, Worcester doesn't have it, Lincoln doesn't have it, Sudbury doesn't have it, Weston doesn't have it, Newton doesn't have it. And when I say doesn't have it, they have no touch zones, and they may or may not have bylaws, but they don't have the 200-foot inclusion, which states every stream which is, it's not only every stream which is shown on USGS, it's every stream which qualifies as a stream in town is going to be, it's going to have this 200-foot wetland protection skirt on either side of it. And again, as Walter stated, the first 100 feet of that designated area are sacrosanct, you're generally not going to do anything within that. It's, it's, again, with respect to the creators of the legislation, it is far-reaching, and it does promise to be onerous. And I would show the respect to Walter by asking, if, if, I may or may not be correct in understanding that any stream up gradient of a wetland, say it's an intermittent stream up gradient of a wetland, passes through the wetland, comes out the other side, the wetland mean annual high water line then defines the bank of that stream, and that's where your 200-foot Rivers Protection Act kicks in. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Mr. Bigfoot?
At this time, I'd really like to ask Mr. Garner to come up, who helped us draft this bylaw and address some of the real technicalities of it, who's had a lot of experience in this. There are, I don't want to speak right now, I don't want to be short of my time to speak, but there's three or four things that have been said that I disagree with, so if Mr. Garner would be kind enough to address Mr. Burke's questions, appreciate it.
Mr. Garner?
I'm Patrick Garner, and just as a background, I live in Northboro.
Microphone a little closer.
I've worked with the commission on and off as a... Am I projecting? No? Okay, thank you. I've worked with the commission on and off for probably fifteen years, and I was president on two different occasions of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, which represents all 350-plus towns in the Commonwealth, and I was on, either on the board or an officer for a period of more than fifteen years. During that period, I reviewed, I was privileged to review many, many town bylaws, wetland bylaws, and what Walter didn't do was sort of set the context, and that is that, that in Massachusetts, there are more than 190 towns that have wetland bylaws. And they, they do so because the Wetland Protection Act on the state level is now relatively old. It, it was instituted in the mid-1980s, and the last major revision to it was the River Protection Act, which came in in 96. So the regulations are between 20 and 30 years old, and the, the science behind all of that at the time is, is the understanding has changed. And the science behind all of that at the time is the understanding has changed dramatically. At the time, in 86, that the Wetland Protection Act was enacted, Massachusetts was really in the forefront and probably the most environmentally conscious state in the Union, which, you know, no surprise, it's Massachusetts. But since then, we virtually have inactivity, and nothing has changed while our understanding of the importance of wetlands has changed immensely. So that's what has driven town after town after town to enact a wetland bylaw, to sort of fill in those holes that the state left with its legislation. So that's the context, and it's very easy to be critical of a proposed wetland bylaw. And I've seen many of these succeed, I've seen towns defeat them, and invariably, there's opposition due to the implication that land is not going to be usable, and that's almost always the argument. But the purpose behind this is, the purpose behind any wetland bylaw is almost always driven by the need to have clean water. Berlin does not have town water throughout the town, and many residents are dependent on wells. And wetland protection is essentially, first and foremost, all about protecting drinking water. Secondly, it's about wildlife habitat. Almost all of the wildlife, whether they're mammals, or amphibians, or reptiles, spend a large portion of their season in wetland areas, so they're very dependent on these. And as Walter noted, and Dave Burke noted as well, DEP presently allows development right up to the edge of a wetland. And that activity, that allowance, has led many, many towns to enact these bylaws. So a lot of what you've heard is not quite as onerous as it has been painted. And I think that is probably the greatest driver here. It's interesting, I think, to note that 56% of towns in the Commonwealth have wetland bylaws. There's been a surge over the last 10 years to enact these because of the constant abuse of the buffer zone areas and the wetlands. Dave Burke's been a lot of times talking about rivers and how this bylaw would change their protection. And I think it's worth spending a brief moment, anyway, talking about what the Wetland Protection Act currently protects and what it doesn't. Now, first of all, what the Commission is proposing is to protect streams that are mapped on USGS mapping. And many of you are familiar with those, they're used in hunting and fishing, and they're used for land planning. And they show streams either as dash lines or as dark water lines, and those are the streams in town that the Commission's talking about protecting. Ditches, small seeps, things like that would not be considered to be a river and would not fall under this protection. But what the state presently protects is what are called perennial streams. And it gives those streams a 200-foot riverfront protection area, it's called, on either side of the stream. Streams that go dry as much as four days a year, they don't have to be consecutive, are considered to be intermittent under the regulations, and they have no protection. So it's completely black and white. Streams that run all year round have this amazing protection on them under the state law, and if they dry out during that requisite four days, they have no protection. They simply have 100-foot buffer zone on them, which allows development right beside the stream under the current state laws. So many, many towns have also been pushed to try and enact a bylaw to broaden that river protection. And that's really the core, I think, of what the Berlin bylaw is all about. So I look at these, and I know MACC, when I was on board there for some of the years, looked at bylaws as being a legacy issue. It's really all about protecting land for your children and for your grandchildren, maintaining the marvelous nature of what is here in Berlin and why everybody wants to be here. It's not, it reminds me of, zoning is critical, and bylaws are critical, and it reminds me of, a couple days I was driving on my way to Dover through Framingham, and I abruptly drove from Framingham into Sherburne, and it was like driving from Austria into Serbia or something. If anybody here is from Serbia, I don't mean negatively, but in one case, you're driving from neighborhoods that have 5,000 and 10,000 square foot lots that are jam-packed into an area that's just pastoral and beautiful. And it was, the difference is that one town chose to protect its natural resources, and the other town opted for a highly dense, compact development. And that's what bylaws and zoning regulations can do, if they're enacted properly and sensibly. So I think that's sort of the context. Walter, I'll...
You know, we're not talking about zoning here, we're all, should be familiar with the zoning in this town. It's fairly strict. The Board of Health has a very strict set of zoning regulations, and we're well-zoned here. I think, Patrick, you may have misspoke or led people to believe that an intermittent stream currently is not protected. That's not true. An intermittent stream, the components of the intermittent stream itself may not be protected if it's up gradient of all other resource areas according to the Mass regulations. However, the components of the intermittent stream within the system, whether flowing within, into, or out of a border vegetated wetland, are fully protected. And those components are the land underwater body and the inland bank which comprise an intermittent stream. So intermittent streams get full protection here if they, given the fact that their components are protected. They also have a 100-foot buffer zone that flank the intermittent stream, and that, present under the state law, is a discretionary zone. And it's going to go from discretionary to not, it's only going to go from discretionary to jurisdictional, fully regulated zone, but it's going to go to 200 feet wide. And that's going to happen on all streams across town, according to the way I read this document. And it's simple, on page 104 at number 5.7, "A river or stream." The definition of a river or stream shall mean a body of running water that moves in a definite channel in the ground due to hydraulic gradient. That's the state's standard definition of the resource area. A river or stream under this bylaw shall be any river or stream that is shown on the current USGS map, whether intermittent or perennial. So you're not, you know, it's not excluded to the streams shown on the map. It's anything that runs in a channel due to hydraulic gradient. And listen, that's good. If you guys are up for the gold standard of protection for uplands flanking all the streams in this town, that's what, you know, this is where this is going. I would add, and I could ask Patrick for some clarification on this, "A river or stream may flow through a body of water, including an impoundment, or a lake, or a reservoir." Whether or not the river or stream retains its riverine characteristics, throughout a culvert or beneath a bridge, a river or stream has an associated riverfront area. That is a fully-blown jurisdictional resource area. As that is defined in the Act, the Wetlands Protection Act, which dimensions are the same as the adjacent protected land-to-way river under this bylaw? That's complicated language, and it's going to get real complicated when it's, you know, happening to you. But that right there, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, the big difference here, and I maybe don't feel I'm splitting hairs, in fact, is the state tells us when a river or river runs into an impoundment, or a lake, or a pond, or a big marsh, or whatever, and it loses its riverine characteristics, it no longer gets the 200-foot protection because it's no longer in effect a river, mainly because it doesn't have banks. So what this document is directing us to do is to find the banks as the river flows through the impoundment. Consider the Ross Dam over there, if you would, that's an excellent example, where the Northbrook flows through the impoundment. It directs us to begin protection and regulation at the mean annual high water line of that impoundment, given the fact that we're disregarding the language riverine characteristics. So if that impoundment is a half-mile wide, you go to the banks of the impoundment, or the mean annual high water line of the impoundment, and you slap 200 feet on either side of that. So, you know, this is, it's not fairly comprehensive, it's extremely comprehensive. Is it far-reaching? Is it progressive? I'm not sure, but it's destined to become onerous. And again, I repeat that this is an excellent set of uplands protection. It's far beyond wetland's protection. And listen, I'm all for environmental protection. I'm an accredited wildlife biologist, I went to UMass, Amherst, to get a degree in wildlife biology. I'm all for good sound protection. And there's some good stuff in here, too, and I'm not knocking the 35-foot zone, by the way. The thing that's the kicker is this 200-foot, they're going to be overlapping one another as you go through town. And when you begin to really put the rubber to the road with a document like this, and you're talking about culverts, and beneath bridges, et cetera, like that, I mean, you may wind up pulling in drainage ditches and giving them the 200-foot. It's highly likely, in fact, that that will, by law, have to happen if this goes through. And let me tell you, you'll be hiring a professional agent, like every other town that I mentioned has a staff, they have a conservation staff, that includes an agent and generally has one or two more people on hand to administer these bylaws. And those people cost money. And to put one professional in place, probably per year, and don't hang me on this, but when you throw in insurance and the rental of the space, et cetera, et cetera, you're talking about, you know, in excess of $100, $100,000 per person. And to understand these laws, you're going to need someone like that. Walter and Skip have done a great job over the years, they've given a lot of their life to helping people understand conservation issues. Well, guess what? This one's a big one, and, you know, this is where lawsuits happen, and they're not unusual, when you have something that may or may not be as onerous as the proposed legislation. So at that, I guess I would ask for clarification, if you choose, Patrick, on, you know, when a river retains its riverine, whether or not retaining riverine characteristics has this massive implication, that I believe it does. For now, thank you.
You guys are good to bear with us. Dave, you can take a seat. You're going to address the question that was just raised?
I am. So I think that the quick and direct answer to Dave's question is that it's a misinterpretation on Dave's part. The underlying definition in the proposed bylaw is that streams that are shown on the USGS quad map are those that are protected. Ditches are not shown, culverts going under driveways, and small ditches are not shown. That's the outline, and then it goes on to describe, using the standard boilerplate language of the Wetland Protection Act, that defines rivers, what river characteristics are. But that's secondary to the main driver, which is that any stream has to be on the USGS quad map. So those are fairly large-scale streams and rivers. Dave?
Excuse me, I think we're finished with that one, let's go on to another speaker and we'll move on. Mark Rolfe?
I'd have to agree with Dave that anything that forms a channel is not defined and could be abused.
Hold it closer, Mike. Hold the mic closer.
It's Dudley Road, 112 Dudley Road, you know it all, what I do for a living. And this, basically, I've gotten to do what I want. But this, I'm speaking here for all the rest of the Berlin citizens who own land, who have paid taxes, and saved it for their grandkids, or saved it for the retirement, and kept Berlin as great as it is. And as Walter said last night, there's already 28% conservation land, which is probably higher than most of the other cities and towns. And all these farms and open land that have remained that way has been built free. So therefore, when those people want to cash in on that, they should be able to have the right, because development is a God-given right. And unless people stop having children, unless people want to stop living next to each other, Berlin, even at a full build-out, will still be the greatest place to live. Peace out, you guys can all follow it up from here.
Well, good evening, my name's Scott Goddard, I like Dave and Pat, I'm a professional wetlands consultant. I'm a resident of the town in Northborough, and thank you, moderator, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am qualified to speak to you tonight as a 20-year practicing consultant, I have degrees from WPI and MIT. I own my own business in Northborough, and in the past five years even, I've done over 1,000 projects dealing with wetland permitting. I'm an expert in these matters, regularly testify before courts. As an expert witness, I regularly present things before boards, such as the Berlin Conservation Commission, and have done such in this town on a regular occasion. But I think I'm most qualified to speak to you tonight on this particular matter because the informational brochure that's been handed out to promote this bylaw actually references me, not my name, but in the footnote on page one, it cites a wetland specialist or an expert that was involved in two cases that was partly an impetus to this project. That alone, I believe, qualifies me to speak to you tonight. I'm going to echo a lot of what Dave Burke said, I would affirm virtually everything Dave said. And not for nothing, but Dave and I are the kind of guys who would gain financially from the passage of this bylaw, because most of all of you would have to hire someone like us to help you through this process. But I'm here not to advocate for the bylaw, but to demonstrate to you some of the concerns that you should consider seriously before voting for the passage of this bylaw. First off, if you look at the informational brochure that was given to you outside of the actual article, it starts off by saying that the purpose of this in the prelude is the adequate protection of wetlands, which purify and recharge groundwater essential to towns like Berlin, which rely on drinking water. Well, if you were to read that, you would think that there is currently inadequate or even no protection of these resource areas. Well, Massachusetts happens to be one of, if not the very most protected states in all of the United States of America. We have the most rigid wetland regulations currently in place. We have the Wetland Protection Act of Massachusetts, which governs the entire state of Massachusetts, including the town of Berlin, that's what triggers the process of the Conservation Commission's actions. We have this fairly hefty document here, this is the Wetland Protection Act Regulations, refined and updated regularly over the past 30-plus years, most recently even just about a year ago. Pat Garner suggested that it's outdated. The Department of Environmental Protection, with all of its research staff, updates this on a regular basis with the current best technology and science research available to us. This is refined science with a process in place to review projects that sufficiently protect wetlands in the interest of wetland protection. We have a process of appeal, we go to DEP if there's concerns with an action of a local conservation commission to make sure there's a consistent level of review. That's already in place. You have fairly robust regulatory guidances on how do you define wetlands? That entire document is a policy by the Department of Environmental Protection on what is a wetland? If you take a 10-page document like what's been presented before you tonight that will introduce confusion to even the definition of what is a wetland, that would replace what you see here to even determine what exists as a wetland in the town of Berlin. You would have a state wetland, you would have a town of Berlin wetland, and you'd have to define it differently based on this policy, sorry, this program that's been given to you, the 10-page document. You have existing regulations that define farming and agricultural practices. This is a 100-page document from DEP titled "Farming and Wetland Resource Areas: Berlin's a Farming Community." It describes what you can and can't do in and near wetland resource areas. That's currently governed by the State of Massachusetts, it's implemented by the Conservation Commission. You have additional regulations at the state level through farm- You have additional regulations at the state level through farm services that allow certain agricultural practices to happen and other ones not to happen. You have federal regulation of wetlands, okay? Army Corps of Engineers regulates wetlands in Berlin, okay? It regulates wetlands in every town, even these little isolated pockets that Walter was talking about earlier, the ones up on top of Mount Pisgah, currently protected by the United States Government Army Corps of Engineers. You can't just go fill these areas in. They're protected, there's regulatory processes in place. You need guidance documents like this that currently exist. All this paperwork exists currently in Massachusetts if you want to do work in or near a wetland area. That's not just wetlands. All streams are protected in the town of Berlin currently, under these laws. Perennial streams that, like Northbrook, are protected. They already have 200-foot zones adjacent to them in the town of Berlin. Intermittent streams, like Dave said, are protected in this town of Berlin. You can't go filling in streams and ditches and such like this. They're protected in the town of Berlin. We have the most stringent laws in existence. This says that this is consistent with other towns and less stringent than many. I find that very hard to believe after what Dave Burke said. I work in 100 towns in eastern Massachusetts. I've seen dozens and dozens and dozens of bylaws, spent hours poring through them. This 10-page article that you've been given is absolutely, by far, the most excessive, far-reaching piece of wetland regulatory action that I've ever seen put on paper. If this was passed, Berlin would stand here and everyone else would say, "Wow, can you believe what Berlin did?" There would be newspaper articles in the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions tomorrow, and everyone lining up wondering, "What happened in Berlin?" The entire town's protected. It's not a Wetland Protection Act, it's an upland and everything protection act.
Please complete your remarks. Please complete your remarks, and please refrain from having our time wasted with applause.
It says here...
Get to vote later, that's what you do.
However, it says, "Over 99% of it," and this is just the introduction document, 99% of it simply restates what is in the Massachusetts wetland laws. Well, that's quite staggering, because I just showed you how thick the state laws are, right? And if 99% of it was the exact same as the Massachusetts wetland laws, do we really need it here in Berlin? What's the point of it, right? The point of it would be that 1%. Well, what's the 1%? I'm going to show you what the 1% is. The 1% is the buried, confusing, vague discretionary legalese buried within this 10 pages that the average homeowner, the average farmer, the average resident won't understand, that you would have to hire someone like Dave or myself to help dissect this. And even that, as experts like we are, we would say, "I can hardly understand what these definitions are intended to mean." Therefore, it would be very, very difficult as an expert to guide you to bring your property or proposed project in compliance with these regulations. So I find very confusing language throughout here. So if you look at the Statement of Jurisdiction under Section 2 Regulations, it lists things that you don't find in the normal wetland regulations. It says, "Oh, we protect groundwater, surface water, et cetera, et cetera." Then it will have interesting phrases like "seeps." You go, "Hmm, what's a seep? I don't know what a seep is." Then I go to the definitions of seeps. Under the definition sections in 5.7, I go, "A seep may be an area from several feet to 50 or more feet across that is wet and soggy and may melt snow so as to provide vital feeding areas for wildlife during the winter." So, I'm an expert. I have a degree from MIT. You hire me, I come to your property, and I say, "Do you have a seep on your property? Do you have an area where snow melts and, let's see, wildlife then can eat on the ground because snow is melted?" That's a definition of a seep. That's what it says. I'm not making the language up. I'm just reading what it says, and I'm supposed to interpret it for you to help you to understand this, so we can bring it to the Conservation Commission for interpretation. So not only that, do we have a seep. I have to define the boundary of a seep, and I have to tell you then, you have 35 feet adjacent to that seep that you can't do anything, and 100 feet that's protected all activities. Furthermore, they give themselves the enforcement over these vague definitions. So under Section 2.2, which is the enforcement section, it lists the kind of authority you would be granting to the Conservation Commission. Now let me just say, currently in Massachusetts, wetland laws are enforceable. The Conservation Commission has the right to enforce them. If they have a difficult time enforcing them, they can go to the DEP. DEP has enforcement authority. So people can't just willy-nilly fill wetlands. You drive around Berlin, you're not just seeing wetlands being filled all the time unenforced. Section 2.2(c), it says, "The Conservation Commission shall have the authority to enforce compliance." Violation notices, enforcement orders, non-criminal citations, civil and criminal court actions as appropriate. Members of the Conservation Commission, officials, employees of the commission are empowered to act as enforcing persons. Section D, the commission may order, that is, demand unilaterally, okay, a person who alters a wetland resource area or adjoining protected land in violation. Section E, Conservation Commission may issue a fine. Section E1, $300 per day. So, per violation. The way I read that, now they might say this, "Oh, Scott, you're overstating the case. We would never do that." Maybe that's the case. But what about the next generation inherits this set of laws, and they go, "Well, that's what it says, that's what we're going to do." If my kid goes out and digs a hole in the ground, because, by the way, it says removal of earth is a violation, digs a hole in the ground 99 feet away from a seep, potentially I've just created a wetland violation that's enforceable for up to $300 per day the day he put that shovel in the ground. You say, "Scott, you're overreacting." I'm trying to make a point, that the regulations are so vague that it grants a far-reaching level of discretion and authority to the power in the hands of very few people. And guess what? If you don't like how they handle it, you can't go to the zoning board of appeals. You can't go to the Board of Selectmen. Like Dave said, you have to go to the Superior Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and lawyer up. And you know what that costs? $25,000 in two years of your life, just to prove that you were right. Okay? I continue to go through the definitions of alter. By the way, alter can include, without limitation, a temporary activity. That's Section 4.2. So if my kid digs the hole with the shovel and then puts it back, it was temporary, at least for that one day, right? So, I go through, and I find a number of things, and I'm not going to try to confuse you with the legalese, because it is confusing, but I would like to say that there's little sneaky things in here that's the 1%. Remember the 99% is supposed to be the same? Well, here's some of the 1% things. Freshwater wetlands, 5.3, shall not be connected to a surface water. I mean, you could have a very isolated area, as small, with no minimum size, could be that big. By the way, it could be something that's that big that has wetland plants that grow that could be argued it's a wetland. I've seen it happen. Do you know poison ivy is listed as a wetland plant in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations? It's a fact plant, it's considered a wetland indicator. According to these regulations, with the poor definitions that they have, it could be interpreted that you could have a patch of poison ivy inside of that table right there, growing. Someone could argue it was created by the presence of groundwater, therefore it's now an isolated wetland and has 35-foot no-touch, 100-foot buffer zone around its edge, and don't dig that shovel within 99 feet of it. Okay? That's how vague this is.
I think that you've made your point, sir. I mean, I know you can go on for two more pages and find some more items to talk about, but I think your point's been made.
I think I'll end it on the note that says, "They are also granting themselves the ability to promulgate regulations by themselves without coming back before you," and that also grants them the right to issue fees for applications. And there's no control on what kind of fees they can allow themselves to grant. So, guys like me who have the most to gain over this, right, except probably won't get any peer review work in town, but besides that... But, you know, I'm having problems with this regulation. So, if I have any questions I can, you know, answer, I'd be happy to do so, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Hi, Andy Donahue from East Colson Road. I'm on the Conservation Commission, and I would just like to say, "Wow, that was something." Appreciate the passion of our neighbor from North Borough and his concern for the citizens of Berlin. And I'm sure there are plenty of developers that would love to see a full build-out in Berlin. But the purpose of this bylaw is to provide extra protection. He's perfectly correct. Massachusetts has a comprehensive set of wetlands regulations, and it's very progressive, but it is an old set of regulations, and it's also uniform. It protects wetlands in Somerville and Boston the same as it protects them in Berlin. And I don't think there's anyone that would argue that the wetland resources here are more vital, both for wildlife and both for preserving the quality of our drinking water. We all have private wells, and I think we like it that way. We don't want expensive filtration systems, we don't want to have to invest in a public water supply system. We're certainly not at a point where we need to worry about overdevelopment in Berlin, but it'll get there. And development can't go on forever. It's a finite town, and you can't have infinite development. So, at some point, you have to start making things that are progressive, that are going to be forward-looking, you know, that are going to be protective of things that are coming along. And there will be a lot more development pressure on this town, and this does something to stave off some of the impacts of it, because once you've damaged a resource, it is almost impossible to restore. Very expensive. It's far easier to protect it in the first place. So, that's my main point on this. I know you're quite bored of all the getting into the reeds as far as the regulations go, but the main point is, we're trying to protect this resource for the town. We need it, it's vital. It's vital for wildlife, and it's vital for flood control and all the other things that wetlands provide protection for. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Ronald Verveska?
Ronald Verveska, 30 Brook Lane. I appreciate the last speaker from North Borough, the information he delivered to us, but I would like to understand the process. As a non-citizen, what was the process that he came up here and was speaking at this town meeting? Who invited him, and just how was this done?
What was the question about, sir? Specific?
Who invited the speaker, a non-resident to come up and speak? What's the process for a non-resident to come up and speak?
The moderator has the latitude to recognize a person to speak. And if the body wishes to contradict me, then you can vote not to let the person speak. I said, "This is a person who had an interest in a piece of property in the town of Berlin as a property in a property way." And on that basis, I said the person could speak once. Okay?
Okay, this is a process, the process is that the speaker spoke to you before the meeting that he wanted to speak. He just appeared. Well, he got permission from the moderator, and he just, moderator gave him permission to speak.
What's your point? Because I can't understand what you're saying.
I'd like to know what the process is, you know? The moderator can invite anyone up who is not a resident? Is that what you're saying?
I do not invite anyone up who is not a resident. That's not correct. And if you don't like it, you can ask, you can make a motion to the meeting that something or other be done, but if you make your motion that nobody that's not a voter in the town, that takes away the experts of the planning board as well.
No, I wouldn't do that. No, I wouldn't want to do that, and thank you for your information.
Thank you. Paul McKelp?
Paul McKelp, 119 Carter Street, Board of Health. The question I have for CONCOM is, will these regs prohibit any 40B developments which fall under the jurisdiction of DEP, which trumps any local regulations?
Mr. Garner will speak to that for the commission.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. The way the 40B regulations work is that they allow a town to waive its local regulations. They allow the town to do so. So, I've been involved in numerous 40Bs. I've worked both sides, I've represented developers, I've done a lot of peer review, I've appealed before, appeared before the Mass Housing Appeals Court as an expert on 40Bs. And the process basically is that a developer comes in, the developer automatically assumes that town regulations, including zoning setbacks and wetland bylaws, will be waived. But it's not an automatic waiver. The process is that the developer appeals to the Board of Health, to the zoning board, and to the Conservation Commission, asking for those waivers to occur. The zoning board, the zoning board is the ultimate decider, after getting recommendations typically from the boards that the developer's asking to waive regulations from. And the zoning board can do a massive waiver of all of the town's regulations, or they can pick and choose those that they think are appropriate for the project. The negative is that if the town uses its discretion and carefully waives various regulations, and the developer doesn't like those, he can then appeal those to the Housing Appeals Committee. And the committee's record of overturning those is in the developer's favor heavily. But many towns spend many, many months working with the 40B developer, massaging the requests back and forth, because the developer must have spent time in front of the Housing Appeals Court, because it's very expensive, it requires a legal team, and time goes by. You had to work with the town. If those regulations are not in place, there's nothing to work with. So the best bet is always have them in place when possible, and then work from there and give away as little as possible. Obviously, when a town creates and passes its own regulations is because they feel those are important.
Thank you. Robert Wheeler?
Robert Wheeler, 32 West Street. I was asked to speak for the Board of Health just on a couple issues. We had a meeting this morning, of course. It ran over, so our meeting was Wednesday instead of Tuesday night. We talked with Walter on a lot of issues about, you know, communicating with boards to try to control any development in town, and not control, but, you know, do what we had to make things good for everybody. Planning board, try to get together, planning board, conservation, any plans come together, we get together on them and do this. As a Board Health member, we were never invited to any of these meetings for these new rules. We're not even sure how they're going to impact the rules we have in place now for our septics. Supposed to be open as a conservation committee, as rules-making, we weren't even invited. That's just from the Board of Health in a meeting. I'll leave it at that.
Charlene DeCaligero, 56 Village Court. I'm given to understand that no one has yet mentioned the issue of drought, which does relate to the issue of streams being intermittent, and also relates very strongly to the issue of having enough water for drinking, for bathing, for cooking, and all of those things. It's been in the news a lot lately in terms of communities experiencing pollution, and also communities experiencing drought. Now, you might have noticed this year there was not a lot of... Now, you might have noticed this year there was not a lot of snow. Last year, there was quite a bit of snow, I heard. I was digging myself out of it. And at the end of last, that year, the year of the huge amount of snow, we were 20% behind in our precipitation, even with all that snow. So, I think as a town that depends exclusively, as far as I know, on wells and groundwater, we should be very concerned about protecting our groundwater and our water supplies. We don't see the signs in Berlin, or at least I haven't noticed any, that say there is such and such a level of drought alert because we don't have a municipal system. But as soon as you cross the line into Hudson, possibly every year I've lived here, I've seen that warning. And I think we need to be very thoughtful about the fact that however progressive these state regulations may be, they did not anticipate global warming and climate change and the fact that larger and larger areas of the country are experiencing either severe drought or severe flooding and sometimes both alternately or at times.
Jerry Freed, 12 Brook Lane. I think most of you know which way I lean as I am very concerned about the quality of water. I am either blessed or cursed for living in Brook Lane where we have two wells. We've had no real water problem as such, but the developer had to put in a reverse osmosis system because of the high salt levels, presumably from road salt in the winter, which I'm not against. I don't want to slide over the road into a wetland any more than you do. So, that's one concern that I have. I would make some brief comments on what the previous speakers from Northborough and Dave Burke from Berlin had to say. And I appreciate their comments. They raised some valid issues, but I think in several instances, some of the things in the proposed bylaw were taken to an extreme and made to appear ridiculous. I don't have any degrees from MIT, nor am I a lawyer, and I've never argued a case in front of any court. Just as I am made to feel very inadequate, one speaker seemed very upset by the definition of the word "seep." As I look at 5.8, it says a seep shall mean an area where groundwater comes to the surface and adjacent soils remain wet seasonally or year-round. There may be an area from several feet to 50 feet or more across that is wet and soggy. It may melt snow, blah, blah. A spring is a small pool. I did study English in college and I think I understand what a seep is, but expert opinions have now led me to question my college education and my inability to understand the intricacies of what a seep is. I thought I knew what a seep was until tonight. I think on balance, and I do try to be balanced, that you could take any law, whether it's a wetlands bylaw or any other law, and by drawing it out to a ridiculous extreme, you could make it appear to be incomprehensible or ludicrous. I really do have difficulty and I would like to be enlightened as to why it's so difficult to define what a seep is and why it would require a bevy of lawyers and a court case to determine what is a seep. Am I the only one who is ignorant of that? I would also ask two other questions if I might. The letter that was sent around by, signed by a number of residents who talked about the new bylaw possibly making some lots unbuildable, that landowners have set aside for their children or grandchildren and so on. These lots may be being counted on to pay for an education and they may become unbuildable. It could possibly hurt homeowners. I would question the signs of that letter, about these three possible effects, ill effects, I would admit. I like property rights as well as the next guy. I like clean water more, but these homeowners who could possibly be hurt by the passage of this bylaw, are any of them present? I would like to hear from them because I wonder, are these possibilities real possibilities or remote possibilities? And if so, could those lots be legally made to exist prior to the bylaw? I'm curious. How many people would be affected by it? And I think the voters should know that because it could have a real effect on which way we vote.
Back to Peter.
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. Boy, I think of myself as a pretty eloquent speaker, but after the three experts, Scott, Dave, and Pat, wow. I think there's one thing that nobody will dispute, or a few will dispute, that this is a confusing law. And there's also dispute as to what really is different between the state law and the proposed Berlin bylaw. So therefore, I'm making a motion to pass over this so that when it's brought back again, there's a table, state law, new law, and we can individually look at each change and make an informed decision. I consider myself somewhat educated, somewhat learned about wetlands, but boy, I'm confused. I have to believe that most of you feel the same way and therefore, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I hear a second to the motion. We have a motion made and seconded to pass. Would you please, Peter, would you make a written copy of motion for the town clerk? To pass over the, if we, so at this point, we will entertain debate only in regard to whether we will pass over or not. Okay? Brenna Ewing.
The first thing I need to say is, the first imperative of a true conservative is conservation. Conservation of air, land, water, and living resources. And I believe in my heart that the whole town agrees with me because we have these wonderful conservation laws. With regards to passing this particular article, I would like to suggest that we, if we could have a commission to look thoroughly through all this in the meanwhile, we pass it and look at it, not just list this and that, but actually put a group of experts together and make it a really good law. Can we do that?
Remember, we're just talking about the motion to pass over at this point.
Yes, Richard Batstone, Linden Street. And I guess I have to confine my remarks to the notion of passing over this. I'm all for that if it'll get it off the table. The fact of the matter is, I don't know about you, but whether it's federal, state, or local, I am sick and tired of government overreach and that's what this can of worms is. So, let's make it go away.
You know, on the pass over, I've been sitting there just listening. In fact, I stopped taking notes because there were just so much accusations about it. This cuts off debate. We can't talk about it anymore. I'm ready to address 90% of what is said and talk about it. It's been an incredible show. You have to ask yourself, you know, we sit and we listen to, the most passionate opposition comes from those who have a vested interest in developing and subdividing the town. That's not an accusation. That's fact. The out-of-towner has an interest in town, he's interested in building and declaring streams non-perennial. All this stuff can be rebutted. The accusation that it's beyond, you can't enforce it, it's not that much more difficult than the existing law. Talk about seeps, you know, you address all these things. The idea you can't pave the driveways, just preposterous. Of course you can pave the driveway. And it goes on and on and on. So, we've sat patiently and listened to, with the exception of Mr. Burke, those who are interested in developing, subdividing, and developing the town, hammer, hammer, hammer. I was waiting for a chance to talk about it. If you pass over it, you're preventing yourself from the right to listen to some counter-arguments. And I just ask that, we're here tonight, let us have a chance to talk about it a little bit more, let some more proponents talk about it, and just give us a chance to enlighten you a little bit. So, appreciate it very much if you voted not to pass over it.
Karen Brown, 183 River Road West. First, I'd like to invite all of you down to River Road to take your cup and take a big glassful and drink from the river. You will find that you can't drink from the river. Secondly, if we are going to have some kind of a committee that looks at what the state law has in place today and what we're trying to do, I suggest there be a third column that we look at how much it's going to cost the town to implement a town and water sewer system like the other towns have, that all of these gentlemen have talked about earlier when they said Northborough doesn't do this, Sudbury doesn't do it, Lincoln doesn't do it, all these different towns that don't have what we have. So, we need to understand the cost when our water is damaged and we can't depend on it for drinking any longer. Thank you.
Mike, can I talk about the motion to pass over?
I just have a short comment.
That this is about passing over? That, yes, no, to do with that at this point?
It's educational, sure. It's very educational, sure. It is very educational, sure.
If it's about whether we pass over the article or not, then fine.
If we pass over, does it go away and come back?
If we pass over, it will not come back to this meeting. Nothing will make it ever, never come back. I mean, that's the way the world is. Next year, somebody can do something different, but this year, it would be for this meeting.
You can just grant me three sentences?
If it's about passing over, yes. If it's about debating the bylaw, wait and see whether we pass over it.
I would not want to pass over the article because Berlin has septic and wells and the wells are atesian, which come from the aquifer and are not contaminated by the groundwater or the wetlands. And the wetlands which flows into Northbrook and down to the Assafed, which is polluted, is only polluted by seven sewer treatment plants that flow into it from other cities and towns. And the other cities and towns have sewer treatment and town water.
Thank you. Please. Be done. What?
Yes, one more.
Yes, Mr. Wheeler.
Well, I don't think he addressed the motion in hand.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Sawyer, on the matter of passing over the article.
Is everybody else as confused as I am? Mike Sawyer, 102 Derby Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think we're talking about whether we want to pass over the article or not. And I think we should keep the discussion going for a while because I don't know about you, but my back has about had it, sitting here three nights now. So, let's just keep some discussion going. And we either vote or make some kind of agreement after that, but after all these people keep coming and then you want to pass over it, it's not right.
Thank you.
Molly Wheeler, 203 South Street. I would like to urge you all not to pass over this topic because I think it's very important that we take, I don't want to say table this issue because that means passing over it, but what I want to say is, I think we need to handle this issue. For the ones that are left sitting here, thank you. I too have joined you the whole duration of these meetings. I've appreciated everything that everyone said upon all the conservational topics. I too want to bring sunshine to Berlin and have us all enjoy these wonderful areas, but I don't agree with the idea of being led by leaders in the sense that are telling us to do as I say, but not as I do. I think there's a lot of transparency regarding this issue that needs to be brought forth.
We're about pass over and you've already said you don't want us to pass over. Is there anything more, is that, is there anything more about passing over?
Yes, I just feel that it's important that we hear what other peoples and persons of this community have to say versus just succumbing to the fact of that we've been here for so long and no longer wish to discuss this issue at hand, which although this article is very far out in our agenda and warrant, I think...
Molly, excuse me, and listen to the point that's been made by some other speakers. Right now, we're talking about whether to pass over it or not. You've already made the point you'd rather we didn't pass over it, right? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Now, we're going to vote on whether to pass over. If you are, if you vote yes to pass over, that means that we will be done with, it will be the end of the article for this meeting and we won't discuss it further. If you vote no, we can continue our discussion and come to a vote on the original motion. All those in favor of passing over the article? Say aye. All those opposed, say no. A no is heaven. Okay. You're the first speaker and then I'll get to you all.
Carolyn McDonald, 108 Gates Pond Road, AKA Highland Common Speedway. Just in case anybody wants to know about conserving land. I am part of the Conservation Commission and I'm part of the Conservation Commission because I believe it is important work for the town. The insinuation that we are sneaky and thoughtless and land-grabbing and our main goal is to make life difficult for people is frankly not why I leave my house twice a month. I do it because I care about this town. I think these things are important. Berlin is a special place and it is facing increasing building pressures and it will continue to face increasing building pressures unless we do something. Every survey that is ever taken about what is important to people indicates... is ever taken about what is important to people indicates open space, the rural feel, the character of the town. This law will help preserve that. Sometimes choices are hard, but sometimes hard choices need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess this is my second and last opportunity. And frankly, as I alluded earlier, I mean, my head's going like this, listening to what we've heard. But first of all, I want to thank those who moved to pass over, particularly Mike Sawyer, who I know is very much against this, but yet he wants to listen and hear more arguments. And I think that was great, Molly, too. So for the people who are against this, to help us discuss it more, we really appreciate that. Let's be a little bit frank about this. This isn't, I don't know, I'll say this as politely as I can. Looking at all the speakers, and again, with the exception of Mr. Burke, one of them is engaged in probably upwards of 60, 65 houses built in town and scouring for more areas to build. Of course, he doesn't want any wetlands, want any protection. Another one is coming into town, and he's looking for areas he has land, because he's speculating with it, selling it, making a profit. Another one got up and clearly stated ideologically he didn't want any government in our backyard, can't stand it. Well, I don't either. However, as a previous speaker said, in the town planning process, when questions were asked, the top two desires of the citizen of the town were to protect water, surface of groundwater, protect the quality of life in the town in the open spaces, and not have inferior development done. This couldn't address that anymore. This is probably the most powerful and important environmental quality of life, growth control policy that we could have. Somebody say, well, it's anti-growth. Well, it prevents wrong growth. But on the other hand, some of the people speaking for this are pro-growth. They want to see more houses in the fields and the mountains, particularly if it's their business, in their financial interest to do. And I'll just drop that aspect of that at that time. But keep that in mind, listening to all of this incredible impassioned and distorted accusations about the difficulty in enforcing this, and on and on and on. Again, I told you before, rivers, everything on the topo maps, this idea about ditches is just fallacious. Ditches aren't on the topo maps. Some of these other accusations, can't pave it, ridiculous. Anything that's more than 35 feet away, you could go. Agriculture is exempt. Tried to make that into a confusing issue. That's state law. Agriculture is exempt from the wetlands protection, to a certain degree, in their definitions. We follow the same definition. That's one of those parts that repeats the state law. There's nothing new there. And again, it's, there's so many aspects that were, so many things that were said twisted, I can't keep them all in my mind. But I would ask, Mr. Moderator, if you don't mind, to just allow our consultant to try and, if he can remember some of them, but we were just shaking our heads with a lot of it. So if you could let Mr. Goner address some of the statements that were made, I appreciate it.
On behalf of the Conservation Commission- To, to speak directly to a few of them and briefly, so that we can keep moving on.
You guys are good. One of the speakers, two or three speakers back, mentioned drought and the issue of that. And that's one of the triggers for the bylaw. And, and it is because when there's a droughty condition, it allows the smaller streams to dry up. And so you end up with that four-day trigger that DEP has in its regulations that allows a perennial stream to be considered to be intermittent when it's observed to be dry more than four days. Now, so who, who declares a drought and who doesn't? That's a function of the Massachusetts State Government, and there's a joint committee between DEP and DM that is staffed by state experts, and they use four or five criteria, and they measure those. And those include precipitation and soil moisture and a number of other very technical factors. And when, when they hit a certain threshold, they, they declare that there's a drought. And then when that declaration is made, streams that are perennial cannot be declared intermittent, and so they're protected. But when that drought, official drought declaration has not been declared, then, then they become fair game. And DEP itself, contrary to what you've heard from a couple of the experts here, admits that that system is broken. They've got a technical advisory committee that they're putting together in 2016 to reexamine the trigger points, because they recognize, because they've been getting complaints from dozens of conservation commissions, particularly in central Massachusetts, that dozens and dozens of streams were lost last year because of the dry conditions. So that, that's one of the precipitating points. And this, this bylaw would protect those streams regardless of droughty conditions or not. Those streams that are shown on the USGS quad maps will be protected regardless of climate change and regardless of other meteorological factors. So that's one of his powerful tools that's built into it. It hasn't been said, but I think it's, it's fair to say tonight, to give you some background, that the bylaw was originally written by an environmental attorney, a woman named Judy Pickett, who works in Worcester. She was on the MACC Board of Directors for many, many years, and has been involved in reviewing town wetland bylaws in dozens of towns. And then the Conservation Commission itself edited that and made some changes to it. But the underlying bylaw that's before you tonight was written and reviewed by Judy, and it follows what, what we call in the business the MACC boilerplate. The MACC, over a period of about 20 years, has developed the, sort of a master wetland bylaw that is recommended for all towns, that's been reviewed by numerous environmental attorneys, it's been challenged in court, and it is the basic underlying structure of what is before you tonight. Where it differs is that it protects streams. And the commission has been very careful to define what those streams are. And I agree with Walter. It doesn't, it doesn't cover ditches, and it doesn't cover little lines in the ground that are not shown on the US Geological Survey plans. And the streams that are shown on those date back, the last plan revision that affected Berlin was about 20, 30 years ago. So these are fairly large significant streams. And the allegation that the commission is trying to grab the ditch that runs through your backyard is simply a misunderstanding of the way the bylaw is written. Walter, was there anything else missing on this? Yeah, there've been, there've been so many, I've been shaking my head. But I, I think it's fair to, to sort of say that what's before you is not extraordinary, it's, it's very typical of the town bylaw. I, I think the, the performance that we saw here about 20 minutes ago, with Scott Goddard throwing out regulation after regulation after regulation, really argues for the bylaw and not against it, because it illustrates and underlines how important wetlands are to protecting all of the various interests that we've been talking about tonight. If, if, if they weren't important, and they weren't important to towns, those regulations would not exist. And they, they do because of that. It, it drives the quality of our environment and particularly our drinking water.
Judy Bowen.
I am not a developer, but I do have a lot that has a stream that goes through it. It divides it in half, maybe two-thirds and a third. And my house, which we measured tonight, is about 163 feet away from the stream. By reading this bylaw, we can keep our house, we can keep our little bridge that goes over the stream, but it doesn't sound like we can put any more plants in our yard. We can't remove any soil, we can't disturb any of the plants that are already there. I guess maybe we could still mow. So I find it that, I think it's, it needs to have some exemptions in it. For those of us that have property that has a stream, we're not developing land, we have our land, and we just happen to have a stream that goes through it. I would like to know if, when you wrote this law, if you looked to see how many parcels of land would be affected by this.
Walter?
I'll take it as a question, Judy, on the, any place that you have a lawn, and you have plants, and you mow it, and you have flowers, of course, that's like saying, can I take my dog out to poop and then scoop it up because of this bylaw? Of course you can. Of course you can plant flowers. And it, it doesn't say that at all. It doesn't. If you're, I've seen your place, it's a beautiful place down there, any lawn you can't touch, but any place up to 35 feet, if it isn't already lawn, already planted, you can't strip the land. And I think the brook is pretty much near the edge, in my recollection. But anyway, if it's there, and you've got 35 foot, it's woodland, skunk cabbage, natural, you know, you can't touch that. If it's out into your lawn, your gardens, of course you can. It, it doesn't say that. And I'm sorry. And now you ask the specific, how many lots it would affect? You know, we don't know that for this any more than we know for the state law. If people wants to come in, if you wanted to build a garage over on your lawn, you'd have to come, if it's within 100 feet, you'd have to file a notice of intent with us to come in with a drawing. And we would look at it based on the laws, so long as you were 35 feet away from any stream or wetland, you could do whatever you want. You could, you could build your garage. So, I mean, we've been working on, I've been involved in this now for 30 years in the town in conservation, and this is pretty straightforward. And as Pat pointed out, the original bylaw that we're using is a patent here, was written by Judy Pickett, who at one time was considered to be Secretary Environmental Affairs for the state, by the way, back in the 80s, that's how well she's known. But I don't know, I hope I've answered your question, and I've answered it accurately. I'm not, not trying to give you a brush off.
Mike?
Mike Sawyer. Walt, you just said 100 feet. Let me back up for a minute. I may have been guilty of this. I went down to the cemetery this morning, and I asked Emerson Chandler if he would send his ghost to the meeting. I didn't think he was going to send two ghosts, but I feel like I won the lottery. You just told Judy 100 feet. We're not going by 100 feet anymore. We're going by 200 feet. I'm going to read a little of what I read, what I wrote down here today. Dave and Mr. Goddard are a hard act to follow, so you'll have to bear with me. This bylaw, this bylaw is big time. We're not talking about tweaking a local rule a little bit to make things more restrictive. Walter is actually challenging the delineation of the USGS map. This bylaw that he's proposing would assume, that's a key word here, assume that all intermittent streams are perennial. In simple terms, this means they could fall under the Rivers Protection Act. Instead of having a buffer zone of 100 feet, it becomes 200 feet. That's 200 feet from both sides for a total of 400 feet plus the brook. I asked around some, and there's not many towns that have this bylaw that would challenge the USGS maps. However, let me back up again. I want to try to make an analogy of what this will do. We live in a society where you're innocent till proven guilty. All right? If the USGS map says the stream is intermittent, then it is intermittent with a 100-foot buffer zone. Walter is saying he doesn't care if the USGS map says it's intermittent. He's going to call it perennial. Am I right, Walter?
I think you need to make your comments less personalized, please.
Well, I'm supposed to be talking to the commission?
That's right.
You know-
That's the way you should do it.
Is this still on? Okay. I'm deaf, too. You got to talk loud. Okay, where was I? All right. He's going to call it perennial, and it's staying perennial unless you spend the thousands of dollars that it takes to prove that it's intermittent, which is what the USGS map is going to call it anyways in the first place. This bylaw, part of it, is a disaster looking to happen. I would never sue the town, but I don't want my tax dollars, and I pay quite a few in this town, wasted on lawsuit payouts. There has not been enough thought or outside input put into this part of the bylaw that he's proposing. I had a little short thing written here that I probably won't say it, after all that's gone on tonight here. So let me skip down a little. Walter's been beat up enough tonight already, so that's why I want to skip this. However, the towns are starting to adopt a no-touch zone in the buffer zone. Now, maybe if the commission had come forward with a reasonable request of 20 or 25 feet of a no-disturb buffer zone regulation, instead of wanting to take complete control of someone's land, and I know he's saying he's not doing that, and maybe he doesn't mean to, but this regulation gives him the power to. Sorry, I didn't mean to say Walter again. Buffer zone regulation. Okay, if they didn't want to take complete control of someone's land, one might, one might be more receptive to giving the commission some tools they could use to oversee such things. If the commission wants a local bylaw, they should sit down with some townspeople and discuss some ideas for a reasonable law, one that has some give and take on every, on everybody's part. Maybe it would work. But this bylaw is all take on the commission's part. Now Walter's going to say, we had a meeting, and you didn't come. I think they had a meeting, and about a half a dozen people showed up. Walter saw me in the store a couple days later and asked me, why weren't you at the meeting? I said, I didn't know about the meeting. He said, it was posted on the conservation site. Well, I don't go home every night and turn on the computer and tune in to Wally World. I got things to do. I got things to do. Now, if Walter wrote the bylaw...
Excuse me, excuse me. Get the personal stuff out of it. And not say that to anybody in the whole situation. I've been trying tonight to avoid it, and let's not say it about a person. Let's deal with the issue at hand without talking about people.
Now, if the commission wrote the law, bylaw out of love for land preservation, then, you know, that's good. You gotta vote for it. I know nobody likes to preserve land better than Walter. We all like to preserve land. But I think that part of this bylaw, the part where he can control the perennial and intermittent part, and this is very confusing. You know, look what it's done tonight already to us.
For your pardon, Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
I would request that you dismiss this figure because of his personal attacks on individuals.
Thank you. Michael, I think you've made your point, and if you're gonna go on and talk more and say things about individuals, we can't do it. It's not gonna...
I guess this is why I don't speak in public too much. Can I close out, Ms. Moderator?
Hmm?
May I close out?
Yes, as long as it's not about individuals. Please be brief.
I think we should vote no on this article and have the commission come back with a bylaw that is a little more reasonable and at least take out, I mean, if they want a no-touch zone, that's fine, the commission, I didn't mean to say that. Every town is going to it. It's a good thing. But to give some, to give the commission the complete control of whether a stream is perennial or intermittent is not right. Thank you. I'm sorry for being personal.
Yes.
Barbara Huntley, twenty-seven Pleasant, twenty-three Pleasant Street. I'm not up here to do a performance. We had quite a few tonight. I'm just here to talk about water. And I'm concerned about the water in Berlin, and I've been concerned through the experiences I've had with our own water. We have a dug well, six foot deep, and you can stand in it. And we've been getting clear water. Well, we moved here in seventy-three, and we've been getting clear water, and recently we've had vegetal bacteria in it. So we've been buying bottled water. Now, we have an alternative. We can put in a well. Our neighbors have put in a well, and they get brown water, so then they have to put in a filter system. I don't want it to put in a filter system because we're getting very clear water right now, but we are buying bottled water to drink. So I'm very concerned about water. I've also just come from Florida and seeing all the water problems they're having from dumping the sugarcane into the ocean, and all the runoff because of the thirteen to eighteen inches of rain they've had. So we have problems all over this country with water, and I'm concerned about the water here in Berlin. So I hope we'll continue to work on doing something to improve it and save it.
Paul?
Paul McKelton, Carter Street. First, a comment. This is the third night of the town meeting, and a little disappointed that Concom has not provided us with the USGS map so that we can look at. Visual aids are very helpful in a situation like this, and I wonder why that didn't happen. My question is, does this bylaw prevent reserve areas to be built or to be designed on an existing lot? When we're talking that much footage, you know, new construction has to put in a septic system, and they have to provide us with a reserve area. Now, if the reserve area falls in within that two hundred feet, is that okay or is that not okay because it's a potential disturbance? And that is very impactful to the Board of Health, and the fact that the commission hasn't run any of this stuff by the Board of Health, I find rather dismayed.
If you want to answer the question, yes. Sure.
Yeah, Paul, if, you know, again, the answer is, the laws right now, your laws, you can't put a leach field within a hundred feet, and that could be an expansion area, obviously, okay? If it already exists, the lot already exists, this is the, if you look through the exemptions and stuff, you can see if land is already altered and already existed. And the Board of Health says not within, you know, a hundred feet, you meet that, but it's already existed. And I think in the case of my colleague, that might, I don't know if that, I don't think that brook dries up, but let's for the purpose of conversation say that it doesn't. Her house is there, the leach field's there, you wanna put an expansion area in an existing house, that's grandfathered. But if you're building a new house, and you're within a riverfront area, but it's already all altered, it's been dug up, the house is there, you can do it. If it isn't, you can't. But that's state law. That's the New River Protection Act. You can't disturb the two-hundred-foot zone, and that's state law. What we're saying is that what is happening is, in one of the previous most dramatic speakers against this, in fact, proved a trout stream wasn't a river and now is building there. So we will, so we say USGS maps. And incidentally, I mean, if I put a map, I probably wouldn't look at it, but I've looked at one the other night, just, and I was dismayed that there's a couple of streams that aren't on the USGS map, you know? And the intermittent things that are on it, very, very few of them on that map. So it's nowhere's near this land grab that we've been hearing. And there was a big discussion earlier about if it goes through a lake or a pond, now that we go on the side of the lake. And that's a good point, but as the speaker was saying this, I'm thinking and thinking and thinking. There's no place in town that it applies. Our lakes, the flood control projects are all protected already. Gates Pond is protected. If you look at that little pond on Boylston Road that Bobby Simplaglia, Simpagliya built, that's already there. It's all pasture. That wouldn't be effective. I mean, it would be effective, but it's already within the hundred foot and is protected anyway. So these, you know, they're simply, a lot of them aren't accurate, but your question's good. I hope I answered it, though.
Mr. Goddard, did you wanna refine that answer?
Yeah, just, just very briefly. The River Protection Act does allow uses within the two-hundred feet. You can, the outer, the outer hundred feet allows a five thousand square foot or ten percent, whichever is greater. And there are also certain allowances for stormwater structures within the inner hundred feet as well. So it's not a, a black and white no-touch zone. It's, it shows some flexibility, and that was because DEP recognized that often the land beside a river was the lowest area, and water runs down into it, so it made sense to allow certain things occurring in that. So it's not, it's not a black and white no-touch.
Hi, Rich Kramer, Village Lee. I was just at the State House yesterday as part of a group that was opposing the pipelines that are being proposed all through the state. And, you know, we know that there was a pipeline proposed to go through Berlin, and through a lot of action from citizens and our state rep and others, it was rerouted and it's now canceled. So I was hearing from people in Waymouth who are gonna have a, that's a proposal for a huge plant to be put, like, within less than a mile of schools, senior centers, and with, for liquefied natural gas. So I'm kind of thinking, it feels far away from Berlin, but I feel like we need to have protections because we don't know if in a year or two, there might be some other proposal for some really huge project, you know, not sixty houses or twenty houses, but billion-dollar company wants to put a pipeline through. And just another point, I feel like this bylaw and the Conservation Commission is asking us to be a little bit humble about nature. And just the way if a child or grandchild finds out they're allergic to peanuts, you wouldn't bring peanuts into your house, or if they're allergic to a cat, you wouldn't have a cat for a pet. So it's kind of like the commission saying that nature needs our help, because of all the developments that's going around in all the towns surrounding us, that we have to think, you know, be a little humble in the face of nature and grant some protections. Thanks.
Thank you. Dave, you have something new? Please keep your time limited.
Dave Berg, Coburn Road. I think there's too much confusion about a simple matter, and I think I could bring it to order fairly easily by asking Patrick the following question. Are streams not shown on the USGS map in this town going to be protected? Just yes or no for now. Trying to get to the point.
They won't be protected as perennial streams. They will not be. They have to be shown on the USGS map to be granted their full status. Otherwise, they're protected as they are under the Wetland Protection Act.
Can you assure me of that in that document?
Dave says he's gonna completely shift his opposition to approval, if I can prove this. Under five point seven, it says river or stream, and it says river or stream shall be in a body of running water that moves through a definite channel in the ground due to a hydraulic gradient. Excuse, excuse us drooling down here. A river or stream under this bylaw shall be any river or stream that is shown on the current US Geological Survey Quadrangle Map, whether intermittent or perennial.
That, I'm not sure that answers the question, and, to be clear, would not resent my position on such a matter that I've tested. A couple of other points, Patrick. Are you, to my understanding, the last drought we had in this state was 2010, August of 2010. So although the drought system for, the system for measuring droughts in this state is not perfect, the whole idea of looking at streams and noting them to be dry from time to time is a correction factor within the USGS layout. When they comprise the USGS maps, they certainly didn't come to every stream and notice if it was dry or wet, when it flowed, et cetera. You know that. It's largely done by topography, and there are other towns that I work in that, you know, are not at all opposed to the redesignation or correction of a stream from perennial to intermittent. That being said, to get to Mike's point, all streams on the USGS, whether they are clearly perennial or clearly intermittent, will have a two-hundred-foot riverfront area associated with them. There's not gonna be a question or a debate. If the line is on the plan, you got two hundred feet on either side of it. Back to Walter's point about flowing into and out of impoundments, that also goes to a stream or a stream which flows into or out of a large wetland complex. That's not at all uncommon in this town, that when the river goes into the, or stream goes into the large wetland complex, often known as a bordering vegetated wetland, typically we disallow its acknowledgement as a river because it loses its banks and it loses its riverine characteristics. The way this is structured, the two-hundred feet will follow the edge of the wetland. If you can stay with me, if the wetland's five hundred feet wide, you gotta go to the mean annual high water line of the wetland. That's what it says, Pat. That, it is correct. When you, when you disallow a stream its riverine characteristics, then you acknowledge only one boundary to the stream, and that's the mean annual high water line. Well, when we don't have evidence of banked full conditions, we go to mean annual high water line, typically.
Okay, we have a difference of opinion. Please move on.
Okay. I, we're probably splitting hairs here, and I don't know about you guys, but I don't feel that this is a straightforward piece of legislation. I think, I'm for parts of it, but other parts of it are just, they're far overreaching and complicated, and I think we're ready for a vote. Thank you for your time.
So I prepared about three-quarters of an hour of discussion on this. I just wanna say, I'm Bill Muldoon on Randall Road. One of the gentlemen that came up said they wanted to hear from somebody, the landowners that were possibly affected. I have bought land in the interest of not developing it, but sharing it with my family, and I've been lucky enough, I'm one of the new people in Berlin, only here about thirty-five years, was able to raise my family here. I actually have seven grandchildren that live within one mile. And the difficulty already, it seems pretty difficult to build here. When you drive through Berlin, it seems like it's a big rock, so the amount of development, I think, is somewhat questionable. You know, one of the most difficult things about things like this, it's, it's like, as, as I get older, I try to search for the balance in things. And there's so much variation in people's opinions here. You know, when it was first presented at the beginning of the meeting, oh, this is a simple law. There's only two or three small changes. Boy, I don't feel that way anymore. Dave, I don't know who you are, never met you, but thank you for coming. I think your, your views were really important, and it exemplifies that, you know, there is a lot of question to this. You know, people that are interested in developing say the law should be changed, but that two-hundred feet, I look at these, these columns in this room, and generally buildings are built on twenty-foot columns. I'm almost certain that this room's about a hundred and twenty feet long. So if this room, if it was twice the length of this room on each side, two hundred feet, that you had to, you could be finding out that your neighbor has a stream that has something going through it, and you're affected by your neighbor because you wanna put a garage out, that you never even saw the stream there or the water there. But again, I think I'm a hundred percent for clean water. But this does not seem like it's been brought forward in a balanced way that's well studied. It seems like it's been brought forward with interest in really stopping development, which, you know, again, I love Berlin, but I don't see how it's reasonable to vote this thing forward the way it is right now. That's an opinion, that's mine, and thank you for listening to it.
Mark?
Hi, Mark Burton, forty-three South Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to remove the question.
We have a motion to the previous question. Is there a second? All right, if we have a motion to the question, that means that we will take a vote as to whether to call off debate. If we vote yes on this, we will stop the debate and go on to the actual vote. If we vote no, we will continue our discussion. It is a two-thirds vote because it takes away people's right to speak. All who are in favor of calling the question at this time, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries in the affirmative with a two-thirds majority. Now we move on to the question, the motion and the question.
Mr. Moderator, I move to put a vote on this to have it taken by your pick and ballot.
It's a little late. I would love to have done that, but it's a little late. I'm already at the point where I don't even recognize any speakers. I move to amend the general bylaws of the town of Berlin by adding a new Article 20. The Berlin Wetlands Protection Bylaw is printed in Article 39 of the warrant for this meeting. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. Article 40. Article 40, about amending the zoning bylaw for a senior residential development overlay on Highland Street. Walter Victhing. It's perfectly all right if people vote, but please don't be talking as you're going.
Mr. Moderator, at the request of the owner, I move that we refer Article 40 back to the planning board for study.
Motion is made and seconded at the request of the owner. Excuse me, I don't have that spot for motion. The motion is to refer the Article 40 back to the planning board for study. That's the only thing we're discussing now. We're going to refer it back to the planning board for study, oh, no. That's all we've, that's the only motion we've got here. Do you want to speak further to that, Walter, or do you set for now?
Only that the owner has given it further thought, and he'd just like another year to think it over. I think it's in our best interest, because there are a couple of other options, one of which I think is greatly in our, in the town's interest, but he said he'd be willing to sit down another year. So that's why he asked to have it referred to the planning board for study as opposed to pass over, which would kill it for two years. He's given us a year breather to discuss it more.
The motion to refer to the planning board, do you want to speak to that? No? Anyone else want to speak to the motion to refer it to the planning board? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of referring Article 40 back to the planning board for study, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, Article 41.
I move to pass over Article 41.
Motion is made and seconded to pass over Article 41. That's the Finance Committee's recommendation. You want to speak to that, Scott?
The Finance Committee puts Article 41 and 42 on here every year to look at whether we have any extra free cash, and if we decide we have some, whether to put it into lowering the current tax rate or putting it into the sort of rainy day fund, a stabilization. And our recommendation was actually into Article 42, so we're asking to pass over Article 41.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to the motion to pass over? Richard Sardell.
Richard Sardell, 43 Baker Road. I move to amend Article 41 to read.
Richard, we're only talking about a motion to pass over, either without pass over or not. If you have something further to say, if we don't pass over it, then we can take another motion.
I asked you about this.
But that was, we have a motion to pass over on the floor. If you were going to make this motion as the first motion, I'd take it. If we had a motion to do something other than pass over, but we have a motion to do that, so this is not discussion on that.
I asked you to amend the procedure, and you told me.
Oh, to amend the motion to pass over.
And then make this motion. I'm confused, sir. You invited me to have a seat properly.
That's why we have the. Yeah, and I was, I was thinking another realm at the time you said that. Debatable, non-amendable. My apologies, that's not, this is not an amendable motion. Is there anything further to be said on the motion to pass over?
May I speak without making a motion?
No.
Sir?
Yes, what I was trying to do is to give you all back $100. Because on page 88, you'll find that there's a balance in free cash of $230,000 after all the articles went through. And I thought that since we were taking, since the town was taking all your money out of previous articles, that you're looking at a tax rate increase of something in the neighborhood of $700 a year next year, that giving you back $100 makes sense. But I guess I can't do that, so I'm sorry that I got confused by the procedure. But I'm also more concerned that, that the, they're passing this article over and preferring to keep the money. That is essentially your change. It's free cash. Free cash is what you spent, what you paid last year, over and above what the town needed, and that in essence, that's your change back. And instead of giving you your change, you're getting coupons for future store trade, I guess, best way to put it. So I'm sorry I couldn't make this article and give you an opportunity, but.
Richard, if you'd like to advocate that people not vote to pass over, and they voted it down, then you could make your vote.
Oh, thank you, sir. I would suggest that we vote down the motion to pass over.
Finance Committee have any further comment? Anyone else want to speak to the motion to pass over? All those in favor of passing over the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ah, people are counting. All those in favor of passing over the article, please raise your hand. 14. 43, yes. 52, no. We will not pass over the article. Is there a motion to be made under the article? Mr. Sardell.
Richard Sardell, 43 Baker Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend Article 41 to read, transfer the amount of $175,000 from free cash to be used toward the reduction of the FY 2017 tax rate.
The motion is made and seconded to transfer the amount of $175,000 from free cash to be used toward the reduction of the fiscal year 2017 tax rate. Mr. Sardell.
Yes. If you look on page 88, you'll find that there's a $230,638 balance in free cash if all articles pass. All of the articles for the operating budget pass, and all of the articles involving free cash for the annual town meeting pass. The article for the special town meeting did not. So the, the number there is consistent with what the report, that SFINCOM's report. Okay, what this does is return to you the money that is essentially yours. You paid it last year. We didn't spend it, nice of us, and you should get some portion of it back. There was about $500,000. What was the total of free cash? Last year? What was the total for free cash? 500, it was around 500,000.
Excuse me. Others are not speaking. Mr. Sardell is, please.
So this is, this is returning that portion to you now. Article 42, which comes up next, which is, which is recommended by the Finance Committee, transfers the amount of $75,000 to the stabilization fund. And that's very proper, because the stabilization fund has been driven down, excuse me, from almost a million dollars in the end of fiscal '14, down to $700,000, mainly because of the special article last year in the special town meeting of $311,000 that needed to be taken out of the stabilization to make up for some missing funds. So that's about it. If you'd like to have your money back, vote yes. If you don't want it, vote no. Thank you.
Scott Hawkins of the Finance Committee.
I want to first start out pointing out where Richard and I actually agree. I agree that after spending the money that we have spent at town meeting, we have $234,000 or so dollars left in free cash. I agree that free cash actually is the money that we took from taxpayers of the town in previous years and have not yet spent. But where I disagree is I think this is a penny wise and pound foolish attempt. We try to keep as a town about $200,000 in free cash. Free cash is, if you think of your own personal checking account, is that sort of float. You don't actually spend all your money down to zero on a regular basis. The town really takes in money sort of twice a year when they take your property taxes. That means that there is usually a period of time where we have spent a little bit more money than we've taken in, based on when the cash flow happens. We use this free cash as a float so we don't have to take loans out from a bank or borrow and pay interest on that. We use that money to save your tax dollars from going to interest payments. And so that $234,000 is about where we like keeping that number. We also use that number to pay for capital items that come up, and so if we spend this down, that's the less money we have next year to pay for things, because we'll spend some of the free cash we throw off this year to build that reserve back up. And sadly, and maybe I should have said this before we had the motion to pass over, because FINCOM opposes this, and this is more than $10,000, this will require a paper ballot.
There's a second reason, or a third reason for why you wouldn't want to do this, is because when you take $175,000 and bring down your tax rate, next year, you're $175,000 less. Your taxes are going to go back up because you don't have the $175,000 to reduce it again. So what we've always tried to do is maintain as much as we can a stable tax rate.
Valerie Chapman, 55 Brook Lane. I think this town is very well run. I think the Finance Committee is superb. If the Finance Committee does not recommend this, I think we should listen to them. They spend all year figuring out what is the best way to handle our money for everyone's benefit, and I urge you to vote this down.
Others that wish to speak on this?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I have a question. Please. On page 93 of the town bylaw governing and conducting town meeting, it says, "All votes on the appropriation of money in excess of $10,000 shall be taken in the first instance by ballot. On above provided unless said appropriation shall be recommended by the Finance Committee." I don't believe we're appropriating any money here. I believe that what we're doing is transferring it from one to another, just the same as the next article where you're transferring it to the stabilization fund. But I would, I would, that was my, my understanding of that, because I didn't want to impose this. If I'm incorrect, then I would stand corrected by you. But I don't, I don't believe it requires a paper ballot. And if it does, that.
That is an interesting technical point, and let's use it as an excuse not to take the paper ballot at this time. We get questioned later, we'll know that from all the time that something like this Are you ready to proceed to a vote? I will ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the amount of $175,000 from free cash to be used toward the reduction of fiscal year 2017 tax rate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay, Article 42, putting money in the stabilization fund. Mr. Hawkins?
I move to transfer the sum of $100,000 from free cash to stabilization.
Motion made and seconded to transfer $100,000 from free cash to stabilization. Scott?
I know the book says 75. It was late, there was lots of numbers on my, my tip pad. If you actually believe in even the Finance Committee recommendation, I actually referenced the number 100,000. We really meant 100,000, and so I'm hoping we can agree on 100,000 into stabilization.
On page 85, in the Finance Committee's On page 85 in the finance committee's report, the last paragraph of their written statement includes adding $100,000 to stabilization fund. So we had it mentioned differently in two places, but I think there was sufficient warning involved with it. So I will accept the motion for 100,000. Anything else to be said on the transfer of free cash to the stabilization fund? Hearing nothing, the motion is to transfer $100,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Yeah, moderator, play it to the... Article 43, the election. Slekman, Andrew.
I drew this article, which is actually the one everybody's waiting for. But I'd like to point out that this is, Walter Vicfry's last year on the Board of Slekman, and he's gotten beaten up a little bit at this meeting, and I want him to have the honor of making the last motion, and a motion that we'll all vote for.
I move to adjourn this meeting on Monday, May 9, 2016, at 12:00 noon at the Berlin Town Office's 23 Linden. To adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 9, 2016, at 12:00 noon at the Berlin Town Office's 23 Linden Street, lower level, at which time and place the polls will be open for the election of town offices under Article 43, and to vote on the ballot questions set forth in Article 43 on the warrant and that following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting is dissolved.
Motion is made and seconded, that we will adjourn the meeting to next Monday at noon, when the election will start, and that following the announcements of the result of the election, this meeting is dissolved. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. A unanimous vote.